I will yours Nancy Presoraki, Delt County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner View?
Here.
Commissioner Barron?
Here.
Commissioner Moyle?
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson?
Here. All right, thank you for coming tonight. The meeting of the Delt County Board of Commissioners will come to order, and, thank you very much, for the Commissioners' informational workshop tonight, I had asked Commissioner Barron some time ago to do a piece on the difference between a representative republic and a democracy. Thank you. But the floor serves yours. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Moyle, for talking to me about this in the past and allowing me to present tonight on our workshop. As he said, what we're looking at is the difference between a constitution, between a democracy and a constitutional representative republic. I have a couple of quick definitions there from the 1828 Noah Webster Dictionary. The significance of the 1828 Noah Webster Dictionary is that it was, in the timeframe, it was a number of years after the Constitution was, and the Declaration of Independence were ratified and such, but it best has the best definitions for what they were looking at that time. And it's a very good reference, especially if you're looking at the, biblically, looking at the definition of words. But a democracy, according to the Noah Webster Dictionary, is a government by the people, a form of government in which the supreme power is lodged in the hands of the people collectively, or in which the people exercise the power of legislation. Such was the government of Athens, that's where it was tried out thousands of years ago, and unfortunately did not work very well. But in the comparison to a constitutional representative republic, the definition is a commonwealth, a state in which the exercise of the sovereign power is lodged in representatives, elected by the people. In modern use, it differs from the democracy, from a democracy or democratic state in which the people exercise the powers of sovereignty in person. Some of the fundamental difference on this is that the democracy, we'll break down, generally does quickly, it worked for a little bit in Athens because they had people who were aware and were well-informed and were reasoning, but it quickly breaks down to mob rule. And it becomes mob rule versus the rule of law. The constitutional republic, representative republic allows, as the citizens elect, as we had an election last November, they, the will of the people, elects the people to represent them. We become the, each, and one of the commissioners who was elected becomes the representative from the people. That is the will of the people to put us there, and it's based, according to what the founders did, on the character of each individual. What is your foundation? What is your knowledge base? Do you adhere to what a constitutional republic is? What I've seen, and I've seen, this is my third year as a commissioner, my 32nd month, I believe it is, and what I've seen is that a lot of elected officials don't fully understand what the difference is. There's a tendency to crisscross to two, and that is not what we should be doing. It's very specific what we do. And a lot of that has to be with the fact that civics, government are not well-taught in our nation. It's an afterthought at best, quite often it's an elective, and that was not the case of the founders when Thomas Jefferson was president. He was also, and at that time, he was also superintendent of schools in Washington DC. And as superintendent of schools, he required two things be taught, two books be used, the Bible and hymn. The reason is, is the foundation of the country was based on those, on those items, on that. And even though in history, modern revisionists have maligned Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin Franklin and a few others, that in condemnatory fashion, the reality is, he knew what the foundation was. And if you read any of the writings of Thomas Jefferson, you'll be quickly realize, this man knew what this, what we were founded upon. Well, the question is, if we don't know where, or a question, but a statement, is if we don't know where we came from, we are clueless for our future. And being that we so often, the people in general, and the unfortunate, a lot of elected officials, really don't know what our foundation is. If we don't have that now, our destination, we do have a destination, and that is chaos. Because the, and that leads to the question, why did the founders choose a republic? Specifically, a constitutional representative republic? And if you go and look at the historical basis, in the mid-1700s, there was a revival that was taking place. And in that revival is, in this definition of the word, and again from the 1828 Noah Webster Dictionary, revival and awakening of men to their spiritual concerns. And one of the things that we need to understand about this is that, that spiritual concern is quite important for each and every one of us. This body is going to fail everybody. If you're born, the odds of you dying are about 100%. So the, but what the spiritual, every one of us has a soul. Soul is eternal, it's part of our spiritual self, and so we didn't know what's going to happen with that. So what happened during the mid-1700s is they had circuit rite or preachers that went across, across the colonies. I believe that the, I haven't been able to get it narrowed down, but I think the, what happened was that, at that time in the colonies, there was the state church, which was the Church of England, which was very demanding and very enforcing of it. And when, and so the persecution of anything outside of that was quite strong. And so, when, when the, God's church is persecuted, it grows. And that's true, been true in history throughout. So, and it grew, and it grew across, it grew across the colonies. Well, in so doing, the common book that was used, two, two books actually were very common in the colonies, the one being greater than the other was the Geneva Bible. The Geneva Bible, as the name says, originated from Geneva, Switzerland, I believe. But anyway, the, the other one that was in the colonies was the King James Bible. The King James Bible was just coming in, in the 1700s, because when it was written, the 1611 King James Bible, that's when it was published, was only to stay in England. And there was quite a lot of abuse for it to even leave the aisles. But eventually, it started getting to the colonies. The Geneva Bible is very similar to the King James. The King James is more eloquent and probably a little bit more accurate as an English translation. Well, being that this revival that took place in the 1700s, 30 to 50 years is what the distance, the time that this was spread over. So it was not something that happened in, as in our society today, they quite often have switched ads down to 12 to 15 seconds because our attention span is too short. But the reality is, it was over a long period of time, and so that the founders of this country were well-aware of what, of what the Word of God was. And so, and so doing, what took place was, up to that time in the world, all governments were authoritative. People really had no rights. For the most part, women were chattel, they absolutely had no rights, but the, and it was, slavery was as common as walking down the street. So the, up until that time, authoritative government was the norm. There was one period of time that was before this, and it was in the, during the time of judges of the Israelite people here. But we'll get into that a little bit here. But in the history of the world, God has established two nations. The first nation he established was his chosen people, his Hebrew people. And the second nation that he established on his word is this nation. And he did it through revival in the 1700s. And in so doing, the, that brought about a authoritative government versus what God was putting forth. So, the founding fathers, as I said earlier, they were very astute as to what the, the Word of God was, and why did they come up with, what they did, a republic? If you look at, at history, Athens had democracy, it failed. The Roman Empire was a republic, it failed. The one that comes in the last century, maybe some in the room haven't heard of it before, but it's called the USSR, United Soviet Socialist Republic, failed. Why did they fail? You see, you had democracy failed, republic failed. The failure takes part because of the reality that the foundational's republics was not on a laws of absolute. And that's what the founding fathers, because of the revival, were awakened to, and so that's what they chose forward on this. So the, and one of the reasons that they didn't pick a different type of governance, or stayed, did not stay under the one that they were under, is I'm going to read from the First Samuel, oh, chapter eight here, starting with verse 10, but just for a little background here, this is during the time of judges. That was, there was about a 400-year period when the, when the Hebrews left Egypt and went into, went into, or no, excuse me, when they left Egypt and they went back into the promised land, Canaan land. And during that period of time, that was the one time in, in history when one nation was not governed by authoritative government. It was, it was governed by judges, and actually, the judges were repeating what God had to say about them. But as has happened so often in the past, the Israelites, over that 400 years of time, decided here, and these verses will relay what took place. Samuel was the last judge, and we'll start with verse seven, verse 10 in chapter eight of the First Samuel. "And Samuel told all the words of the Lord unto the people that asked of him, a king. And he said, This will be the manner of the king that shall reign over you. He will take your sons and appoint them for himself for his chariots, and to be his horsemen; and some shall run before his chariots. And he will appoint him captains over thousands, and captains over fifties, and will set them to ear his ground, and to reap his harvest, and to make his instruments of war, and instruments of his chariots. And he will take your daughters, to be confectionaries, and to be cooks, and to be bakers. And he will take your fields, and your vineyards, and your olive yards, even the best of them, and give them to his servants. And he will take the tenth of your seed, and of your vineyards, and give to his officers and to his servants. He will take your merchant men's servants, and your maid servants, and your goodliest young men, and your assets, and put them to his work. He will take the tenth of your sheep, and ye shall be his servants. And ye shall cry out in that day because of your king, which ye shall have chosen me; and the Lord will not hear you in that day. Nevertheless, the people refused to obey the voice of Samuel, and they said, Nay! But we will have a king over us." Our founding fathers read those verses and knew them well. They didn't say, nay. They said, ye, we will not, we will not have a king over us. And because when you go with the reasoning of how we came to where we are, the, we need to know these, we need to know Scripture, because our founding fathers, that's what they built this country on. So the, some of the, some of the Scripture verses that I know they used, and well, just to back, this is Scripture verse, but it is what the Israelites, the laws of God that they were to be living under at that time, this is, it's the Ten Commandments. They rejected those, they rejected God. But the Ten Commandments, the first four, here, thou shalt have no other gods before me, thou shalt not make unto thee any graven images, any graven image, thou shalt not take the name of the Lord thy God in vain, remember the Sabbath, and to keep it holy. Those four commandments are our individual relationship with God the Father. And that was what, that's why God gave them those commandments, and that was what they were to be looking forward, is that each one individual's relationship. The last six commandments, honor thy father and thy mother, thou shalt not kill, thou shalt not commit adultery, thou shalt not steal, thou shalt not bear false witness, thou shalt not covet. They concern our relationship with others. Love thy neighbor as thyself. The, and so, there's these different, as I said here, these different ones that they were using, these, these are all things that the founding fathers knew, they, they rejected what the Israelites accepted, that they wanted a king. And they also went in the Book of Proverbs. And in Proverbs, chapter 14, verse 34, righteousness exalted the nation lifts it up, but sin is a reproach to any people, it takes them down. Proverbs 28:1, the wicked flee when no man pursueth, but the righteous are bold as a lion. Proverbs 29:2, when the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice, but when the wicked beareth rule, the people mourn. These were all things our founding fathers knew and followed. They also, the question over time that many people have asked, and I would dare say that people in this room have thought of this over time, why are we here? They also read this, Ecclesiastes, written by the Solomon, who was King David's son, who took his place after he left the kingdom. King Solomon was the wisest man to ever walk the face of the earth. And it's been, God told him that that was going to be the case, he will be the, and will be until the end of time, it'll be Solomon. Solomon wrote the Book of Proverbs. Solomon wrote Ecclesiastes. A phrase you might be familiar under, that was, came from the Book of Ecclesiastes, was, there's nothing new under the sun. But one that a lot of people are not familiar with, and it answers the question that plagued mankind for a long time, but Solomon, in the wisdom that God gave him, in Ecclesiastes, chapter 12, verse 13, said that, let us hear the conclusion of the whole matter. Fear God and keep his commandments, for this is the whole duty of man. Our founding fathers knew this, they read this. They not only read it, they not only studied it, they not only believed it, they lived it and they loved it. And they built a nation upon that. These are very important for each and every one of us. Another verse that they definitely use in this, Scripture is full of these verses, I'm minimizing the ones that I'm able to use here, but Isaiah, chapter 33, verse 22. We have our three, three branches of government, the judicial, the legislative, and the executive. And this is where the founding fathers came up with the three branches. The Lord is our, the Lord is our judge, the Lord is our lawgiver, the Lord is our, is our king, and he will save us. Judicial, legislative, and executive, all of which are important. As, and how, how, how important was this in the reference? In our oath of office, we take, we take an oath of office to the, to the US Constitution and to the Michigan Constitution, and all states are the same, our branches thereof, their constitutions. But as a cornerstone of federal law is the Declaration of Independence. All federal law has, is a cornerstone from this, and it's also intertwined in, unseparable from the Constitution. So when we take our oath of office, we are actually taking an oath of office to uphold the Declaration of Independence. To see how important this was to our founding fathers is in the first two paragraphs, or paragraph and a half, when in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God, meaning the laws of God, entitle them to a decent respect to the opinions of mankind, requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. This first paragraph, it's, the whole focus is on God and God's Word, and what he, what he had presented to each and every, to the world. Second paragraph, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, rights of God, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundations on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. The, it's right in the very beginning of our Declaration of Independence, our oath of office, and it permeates all the way through. God is the clear factor of what we are taking place right here. And to give you some idea how important this has been, and still continues to be, is I have a series of quotes here, from, I think you recognize some of these names, of course, I, like I said earlier, the, unfortunately, our, our governance and our history are, oh, electives nowadays. But Daniel Webster, quote, quote here, whatever makes men good Christians makes them good citizens. William Penn, if we will not be governed by God, then we will be ruled by tyrants. That is, that is the fundamental difference between democracy and, and the, for the republic, and also any other form of government. Authoritative government, just, it's understand, yes, we can talk about tyrannies, we can talk about ayatollahs, emperors, monarchs, but democracy becomes a authoritative government. Ben Franklin, if men are so wicked with religion, what would they be without it? God governs the affairs of men. Patrick Henry, it is when people forget God that tyrants forge their chains. George Washington, is it impossible to rightly govern the world without God and the Bible? James Adams, or John Adams, excuse me, our Constitution was made only for a moral religious people and could serve no other. Edmund Burke, all that is necessary for the, for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing. Thomas Jefferson, the Bible is the source of liberty, and will make us, will make better citizens. John Quincy Adams, the Bible is the book of all other book, others to be read at all ages. Our founding fathers, when they, when they wrote the Declaration of Independence, they met in Constitution Hall in Philadelphia, they didn't, they, they started off, that each session was in hours of prayer. They bathed that in prayer from God and guidance, and wrote it. When they formed again some seven, eight years later after the War of Independence, the, they started off, and for the first three weeks, they completed, they accomplished absolutely nothing. One of the only two or three individuals that was there at the writing of the Declaration of Independence, Benjamin Franklin was there, at the, for the writing of the Constitution, and he told the conventioners that what had taken place at the, for the writing of the Declaration of Independence, and they, they went into sessions of prayers for hours, and within days, the writing of the Constitution was coming about very quickly. Abraham Lincoln, I believe the Bible is the best gift God has ever given man. Samuel Jackson, I have so fixed a habit of prayer in my mind, pray without ceasing. Franklin Delano, Delano Roosevelt, it is necessary for the welfare of the nation that men's lives be based on the principles of the Bible. Woodrow Wilson, I am sorry for the men who do not read the Bible daily. I wonder why they depart themselves of the strength and the pleasure. Calvin Coolidge, the foundations of our society and our government rest so much on the teachings of the Bible. J. Edgar Hoover, prayer is man's greatest means of tapping the infinite resources of God. Douglas MacArthur, it is an infallible reminder that our greatest hope and faith rests upon two mighty symbols, the cross and the flag. Ulysses S. Grant, whole ass of the Bible, the sheet anchored to, to your liberties. All of our liberties are attached to the Bible, all of them. Benjamin Harrison, it is out of the Word of God that a system that has come to make, it is out of the Word of God that a system has come to make life sweet. It truly has. The founding of this country and what it has done for the world has lifted the entire world. Economically, from a freedom standpoint, there can be arguments out there, but the reality of us, where it was when this country was founded, and where we are today, it, it's, it's pale in comparison. Over Cleveland, the citizen is a better businessman if he is a Christian gentleman. Andrew Jackson, it the Bible is the rock on which a republic rests. You see, all of this, these are, most of these that I quoted from are presidents of the United States, and knew the value of what this was, and we're very much in tune to what the foundation of our country is. We have lost that, and we're losing it at a very fast pace. The Bible has the solution, the solution, for whatever ails society in this entire world, and always has had it. And our founding fathers knew it, and that's why they used it. And that's why I want, I'm thankful for being able to present this. I believe that more people don't realize the connection that we have here, and that how important it is, and that it humbles, we should be humbled by the responsibility we have to make our decisions, to do the, the business of the people, we need to be founded in the Word. And that is not something that can be done in a very short period of time. It is something that, it takes constant effort, as our founders knew and did. They did it for years. Like I said earlier, Geneva Bible, and then what was coming in was the King James Bible, during the, this period of time, was the main book of reference across the colonies. With that, this is, I'm very passionate about this, I know, I know it is what we need right across this land. As I said, there's nothing, there's no solution that cannot be had by using Scripture. And it, and also, the, it reminds me that I gave a commencement, I was part of a commencement speaking situation almost 20 years ago, and the title of my speech was, God, Absolute Truth, and an Auction. I thought it was a pretty catchy title, but anyway, the, but I finished the speech, and I'd like to just say that last part of it there, and I'll, and I'll conclude, and then I'll open it for questions. But as I was speaking, when I did this, at that period of time, I was holding a Bible in my hand. And not this particular one, but another one at the time. And I started the auction, and I said, the, who will give five? Who will give 10 years? Who will give 20? Who will give 20? Who will give a lifetime, the only acceptable bid for seeking absolute truth? And this is the only source. I thank you, and are there any questions?
Any questions for Commissioner Barron?
My question is, what am I supposed to take from this? Because I believe in a lot of the stuff you say, and how does this play into the role of making decisions today? You know, because you said the difference between a democracy and a constitutional republic. I mean, still, you have the people you serve, and things have changed over the centuries on how we separate church from state and stuff like that. And this was like, I don't know what this workshop and this speech was supposed to retain for doing the business of the county outside of a process maybe not being followed like years ago. I mean, so I'm just asking it kind of real briefly.
I will make it as brief as possible, but that is not close to being brief for that can be answered. But as you said, the separation of church and state, the separation of church and state does not exist in the Constitution. That was a letter to the Danbury, Connecticut.
Is that taught nowadays?
What's that?
Is that taught nowadays? I mean, we have representatives that are, they don't believe in religion. I mean, constituents and stuff like that. So I'm trying, how do we represent everyone by following Scripture? And I agree with it, but I mean, I still represent everybody.
What you represent...
Is just the Bible's version of how we represent the people?
We are a representative, a constitutional representative republic, meaning we fall under the rule of law. The law we fall under that was established and founded by our founding fathers was of the Bible. The God's law is immutable, unchanging. It's the same yesterday, today, and forever. That's why they based it on this. That's why the republics of the past failed. They did not put it on something that was immutable. It was a moving target. As you said, things change. Separation of church and state. This isn't a church and state. This is a sovereignty of God, and this is his creation. We were put here for his purpose, not for our own, and they recognize that. This is our foundation. This is what we're to work from. And when we make these changes, then we go towards the direction of authoritative government. We do it massively in regulation. We do it in taxation. We do it in a whole lot of other arrays. We go towards that direction. We do it in the social welfare program. The founding fathers, in a verse here that they definitely, I believe, used was, find it here. It's pertaining to the, yes. Okay, 2 Thessalonians 3:10, verses 3, chapter, 2 Thessalonians 3:10 through 12. I believe this was used by William Bradford at Plymouth after the First Winter. And William Bradford was the governor for the pilgrims, which are Puritans, were part of the Puritan movement, after the First Winter, and 50% of them died of starvation or related disease which was created by starvation. That was the first social welfare communal system in the United States. Before, we had a capitalism. We had the socialization, social system, social welfare system. The Plymouth, at Plymouth, the pilgrims had to utilize, they were under contract with the Dutch who paid for them to come there. They were, well, they were missionaries, but also they were to generate revenue and to repay some of what the cost was for them to go there. But a part of that was that they came up with a communal system, a socialist system, and everything was put in a common warehouse. You put in as you were able, and you took out as you needed. 50% of them died that First Winter, and the ones that made it through were in very difficulty. This is part of our foundation. This is what we need to be working from. And so, and the consequence of that is, I believe, William Bradford went back, because these were, these were actually, these pilgrims were here to witness to the natives, but in these verses, 2 Thessalonians, Chapter 3, Verses 10 through 12. "For even when we were with you, this we command you, that if any would not work, neither should he eat; for we hear that there are some which walk among you disorderly, working not at all but our busybodies. Now them that are such we command and exhort by our Lord Jesus Christ, that with quietness they work and eat their own bread." See, we've gone away from that, and see, well, things have changed. Has things changed for the better? No, they haven't, because we have, we, when you deny God's sovereignty and His law, you will eventually lose His blessings, and we are already on that path.
Well, I would just like to say, I thank you for that history lesson, and I would like to talk to you on the side about it, because I just feel it's overwhelming for part of the commission to understand the whole history of it, and I would like to be informed a little more than your presentation today, but I do thank you for it.
Well, I'm very much glad to do that. Understand that what I presented here, this 30, 35 minutes, 30 minutes or so, is, you've heard the phrase, "The scratching the surface." I don't think I've hardly blown off any dust. This is huge, and it's something that each and every one of us needs to take to heart, because that's where good governance needs to come from. Any more questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it very much. Any other topics to come before the Commissioner's informational workshops and moving, nothing that we, thank you again, Bob.
How do we add a topic?
Well, I think we just bring it up. What do you want?
I mean, ahead of time.
No, just bring it up. I mean, we, you know, it's always open. The floor is open for that.
Is this like a committee of the whole, or it's just a workshop?
Kind of, yeah. We don't vote. Workshop. You know, it's like a miniature committee of the whole, but I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we're not sending any suggestions back to the full board, but if there's something you want to talk about or passionate about, sure.
Okay. Well, I didn't know, I didn't know how this topic got on the agenda, because I didn't see nothing there.
We didn't have anything on, and he and I had talked about it a couple of months ago, so I asked him if he wanted to take a swipe at it.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Sure. My pleasure. Okay, I would need approval of the minute, well, approval of the minutes of the previous session of 7:18:23. Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Okay, we also need approval of the agenda for tonight. I have some addendums to add to it, if you would please. Under new business, let me see how many items we have. What does the number of items go up to?
Four.
Four. So number five would be the, number five would be the registration of Jay Healy, request for lump sum payout to fill District Court Administrator, Magistrate position. So if you want to write that down as five. Number six is a credit card request from District Court Judge Parks. Number seven would be approval for administration to request opinions of legal counsel. So these are three new items that, if it pleases the commission, would be added as items five, six, and seven. Does anybody else have anything? I would need a motion to adopt as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron to adopt this agenda as amended. All additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda for the evening. Okay. Excuse me for a second. Communications, received communications, forwarded, we do have some written communications. Motion to place him on file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. And now we are looking at reports of standing and statutory special committees and others.
There are none.
There are none, are very good. And we have one person signed up for what appears to be public comment on agenda items. Diane Weber, did you want to speak? We still, thank you.
I'm not sure whether what I have to say is about the agenda.
Well, let me know what it is, and I can help you.
Okay, I would like to make some comments to the committee here.
Regarding them.
Regarding some committee members.
Okay, so it's not about a specific agenda item? That would be under general public comment at the end.
Okay.
Thank you, dear. Okay, so just to clarify, if you, at the beginning of the meeting, if you wish to speak about a specific item, agenda item, that, you know, it's very specific, address that item, but general public comment at the end of the, end of the commission meeting, you more than welcome to, you don't have to be limited to. Very good. So anybody else for the agenda, general public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the administrator's report.
The Delta County Corrections Facility and staff has completed their federal study of operations two days ahead of schedule. The reviews from the study have been very positive. One auditor told Sergeant Hanson that Delta County has the best jail in the state and is among the very best in the county, or the country. They were impressed with the staff and the behavior of the inmates. I'd like to thank you, Corrections, for bringing Delta County Jail beyond the benchmark. The hiring for the Delta County Airport Manager position has interviewed three individuals so far. We're planning on interviewing one more candidate, and then we'll move on to the second round of interviews if necessary. I would like to give an update on the courthouse security project. The sheriff has applied for the grants to assist in the upgrades to the Delta County courthouse security project. Although some adjustments were made during the meeting between IT, Maintenance Sheriff, and myself, I believe the upgrade to security will give the citizens and employees a safe environment to conduct business in, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. Also, I'd like to comment on the Northern Lights Music Fest. During the consensus, during the Delta County ADA meeting, the consensus was the music fest was a hit. My favorite story of the meeting was how Visit Escanaba was able to call local goods and service vendors to assist in the production of the event. Without question, our community came together to put on the largest one-day event of the summer. Visit Escanaba and all the sponsors have done a great job with orchestrating such a hefty event in a few short months. Thank you for bringing those stars to Delta County and putting us on the map again. Thank you.
I would need a motion to place that report on file. Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Chairman Melner of the Personnel Committee, do you have minutes or a report?
Me and Commissioner View met twice. Once was to discuss the administrator's contract, and we went over that pretty thoroughly, and then the clerk was also involved in that. The second meeting we had was more or less to discuss the contract on evaluation. We want to get the evaluation started a month after she signs the contract, evaluate the administrator, so we have an idea what we can go with when we have another evaluation a month before her one year of being employed.
I have a question for you, if I could. If we're going to do a merit-based evaluation, what is, how are you, where are we going to get the baseline? How are we going to establish that, Mr. View? You seem to have experience.
Yeah. Commissioner View's been... Yeah, I have many, much information on it, and we're going to meet over the next three to four weeks and hone in on it along with Ashley to get the baselines on how it works. And I noticed today we received this analysis on increase and how do you merit, it's performance based also, and I'm working what Michigan works, and they just sent me all the information today. They were supposed to send it last week, so I'm still reviewing it, and it will be a percentage increase for high marks, regular, meets all the expectations, or maybe a little bit below. Like, if you make $100,000 and it's a 3% increase, it's $3,000 if you meet everything, or if it's 5%, it'll be based on that, but it'll be something that we all can rally around that would be fair for the taxpayers, the administrator, and the board to accept. We just don't have it in stone yet. And we got Escanaba's evaluation, we have the road commission's evaluation, we have Delta County's evaluation, and then I just received Michigan Works' evaluation now, and they sent a bunch of other stuff that we have to discuss locally, because people and big businesses going away from a yearly evaluation is what I was told today. Basically, you can't remember everything that happens in a year. So they're doing evaluations every month. It just, well, you just come in, it just takes a few seconds, make sure you're on track for everything. She's sending me all that information, so maybe that would be a complete, different route we'll take, so that there's no missteps, nothing can happen quickly, because we catch it right away. I'm just telling you what they told me, and she was going to re-mail me some of that idea that the whole country is going away from this yearly evaluation, which I thought was something different. So we'll probably look at that, and we're planning on having a couple more committee meetings to evaluate that process.
So there's the possibility of you suggesting something totally different than what we've been doing in the past, which is fine with me.
Yes, yes. So that...
Give me a second. Mr. Priest, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought he was done.
After Steve's done, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm done. Okay. So if this is what we're looking at, on much longer months maybe, before we have a signed contract, and I think that we need to, one, we're completely changing the, according to what Commissioner View is saying, we're completely changing the contract from any contract that we've ever had. Two, a monthly evaluation is...
No.
No. No what?
No. I just gave you the information that was relayed to me today. They're going to help us do what we've always done, but they say most companies and government agencies are kind of moving away from that yearly thing, because if something happened today that you make a note of, in a year from now, it's kind of late to tell them that they did something wrong 12 months ago. So you have to stay on top of it, and the employee likes it, the county will like it to the extent that you know and you're on top of everything right away. I'm not saying we're going to go with that.
The contract and the evaluation are separate entities as far as, I mean, you know, I'm not worried about the contract getting signed tonight. I mean, obviously, I'm planning on it, but I...
Well, how can we sign a contract when we don't know what, what her raises might be? You know, we don't, like you said, we don't have a baseline for the percentage of whether she exceeds expectation, meets expectations. We don't have those percentages.
That would be board action.
How can we ask her to sign a contract when we don't have that information?
I would ask her to sign, Mr. Burn, did I? I would suggest we sign the contract, and then we look at the evaluative tool in the future. I concur. We have to, if we have expectations, we have to make a rubric or what do you want to say? These expectations have to be clear and clearly defined on a baseline. But, I mean, her signing the contract is one thing, and then this board coming up with the information, determining how it wants to evaluate is another.
So she's going to, she's going to sign this not knowing how we're going to evaluate her, and if she doesn't like the way we evaluate her, then what recourse does she have?
I don't know. I can't answer that question. That's, you know, this is where we would, I think it would behoove us to have legal counsel at some of these meetings, and this is...
I'll have her phone number if you guys want to call and ask. I have her number. She offered tonight. She said I can, I have her on call.
Okay, yeah, because I just, I don't see how you can ask Ashley to sign any contract without all the details there.
Well, again, I understand what you're saying, and we currently do have an evaluative tool. It will be up to the... It will be up to the commission to determine whether we use that tool or a new tool. So, I mean, this is to agree, go ahead, please.
I don't think it's the evaluation that's the concern, it's what is, what are the increments for the raises?
Correct.
Well, you, you stumped me on that one, Mr. Peterson, I don't, I don't, I can't challenge you there, I mean.
I, I can tell you, I would never sign a contract until I had that information.
I don't want to put this contract off, so. What is the, I need quiet in this room, please.
There are a couple of things in here that I have.
Go ahead, sir.
Can we do this? Can we, I know we told her that she was going to get this extra money along with the administrator secretary get the money. Can we just stop that and just let her work on what she's getting right now?
This is my suggestion.
Oh, would you want to read this? Let's read the, John, I'm sorry, I mean it.
Yeah, because we just got this, just as we sat down tonight.
This is Nancy, so let's read it so the audience knows what we're talking about, this is what an incremented.
My suggestion is, there's, there's four. There's unsatisfactory, does not meet expectations, meets expectations, and exceeds expectations. And I would say if it's unsatisfactory, that should be a zero. Does not meet expectations, a one percent. Meets expectations, that would be a 3% increase. And exceeds expectations, that would be a 5% increase.
That seems simple enough, now how we arrive at those decisions. Are you happy with that, Mr. Peterson?
If we, you know, once we work through it, yeah. I, it, it, when it comes down to it, it's not me that has to.
Of, of course.
It's, it's Ms. Young there. But like I said, without, without having that information, she, I, I don't know how she would make a, make a.
Well, I, I would, I'd like, but, Mr. Barron, do you have any comments?
Well, I, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Peterson, is we've had all the suggestions and want to make all these changes.
Can you hear us? Go ahead, move. Sorry, go ahead.
That's all, I thought, excuse me, I'm sorry. These, again, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Commissioner Peterson. We've had all these proposals cha, of, to change. Well, in reality, we, we, that's, I think that's fine, but we need to get this contract done for what we've already started and using what Nancy, Clerk Prisrocky has brought forward makes sense in this, using the evaluation tool that we have, and over the next year, then develop this. Because right now, we're trying to develop something and get a contract signed, and it's, it's confusing, and this would simplify that. I'd rather see the simplification here, it's not simple per se, but just as a word, in that we would use it, the evaluation tools that we have, and then develop what Commissioner View and Commissioner Malner have been talking about here, because we're, we're trying to change a whole lot of things right here. We need to get this contract done, it's been delayed for months already. I think we're three months or close to three months, and it should have been done, but, and then these proposed changes, because they're in a developmental stage. You generally go with what you have and develop something different and bring it in later.
Mr. Melner?
What's your thoughts on?
It's, it's been a trying experience to be fair for everybody. I, I got to admit, I didn't, I didn't agree, agree with the board's decision in the compensation and everything that happened, but I'm, I'm willing to go with this contract. We've, me, Ashley, Nancy, and John, we sat down more than just two times. We sat down many times and went back and forth, and I thought it wa, we gave in, she gave in. It was actually a negotiation both ways. There's a couple of items in here, this evaluation, fine, we can stick with the old evaluation, I don't have an issue with that. But I, I think over the next year, we, we should be looking at that and holding that in, and if we get it quick enough by, by her evaluation time, maybe we'll use it. I mean, it'll be a board decision, but I, I think we should go forward with the contract.
I agree. I believe that Clerk Prisrocky's, her layout of, you know, acceptability in terms of a baseline, it simplifies things.
Well, we had that, we talked about that, we just didn't put figures in. That, that was all part of our, our plan. Ashley knows that.
Let's, let's get these minutes on.
And I mean, we just discussed this on Friday.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get these minutes on, because we have to revisit this anyway, so could I have a motion to put this on file, the minutes on file?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, Mr. View? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That'll pass. Okay, and very good. We have department head updates, are there any department heads that wish to update the commission regarding what you've got going on? Very good, unfinished business, the general orders of business, we're looking at unfinished business, now we're moving on to the, the contract for the county administrator slash controller. Ashley?
You have it in your board packet, I guess I don't want to present this part. This would be one of the personnel commissioners or?
It's not in our board either.
It's the contract, it's under unfinished business one.
Gentlemen, questions or comments?
Would this be on here?
Okay.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be looking for.
I think she just wanted to call it up.
You, you have to, the board as a whole has to approve to offer me that contract that came out of personnel.
Okay, yeah.
Is it?
This is what we.
Right, so this is the personnel approved, I don't know if they can hear me, because I'm by the microphone. This is the personnel committee approved contract that we had made up.
Many, the multiple discussions.
Right, this was the one, I think it was last dated 7/21/23, that Nancy had typed up, but we need board approval because there were changes made from, to offer it to me.
To enter this offer to you and then you.
And then I will contact, because, or, I'm sorry, Clerk Prisrocky on either acceptance or not.
You're not willing to accept it tonight?
Not on, no administrator contact, accepts it on the spot like that, it's always done outside of the meetings.
Well, we did, we did negotiate and take stuff out, add stuff in, and we did, we did a lot of back and talk bartering, which I was happy with, so I, I did. I would move that we offer this negotiated contract to our, to the administrator.
We have a motion by Commissioner View. Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? Mr. Peterson? For. Oh, then, okay.
Okay, so there, there were.
There were a couple suggestions for changes, I think you all had gotten that, the fails to provide leadership, 3C6 and 3C11, which is insubordination. Can we clarify those before we offer the contract?
All right, let's clarify, what is, you said 3C6?
Yes.
Okay, what is 3C6?
It's under.
Falls under to provide leadership.
Well, it's termination and.
Termination, yes.
Just, just add them, them statements in there.
I think they might.
No, the, the statements are in there.
She is, might have a concern.
I would, I would like to have 3C6 struck.
Because that's subjective?
Very much so.
I would support that.
Okay, so we'll strike that one?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have a motion on the floor already, so we'd have to retract the motion.
Well, or, or, in the discussion here. I'm not sure.
We can end the discussion, but, I mean, all right.
I, 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 I would need time to understand why, why that's being stricken, because in law of contract, that's, that's.
Did somebody read the, Clerk, would you read the?
Yes.
3C6?
She asked that it be struck because, for just cause, should be based on facts that are, one, are supported by substantial evidence, two, are reasonably believed to be, believed by the employer to be true, and three, is not for any arbitrary, capricious, or illegal reason. I believe this section falls within the number three category and is subjective and should not be included. I would like it removed.
Mr. Barron, Mr. Peterson, you still?
I'm, still would like to have that struck, because I do believe it, it is subjective, it could be, you know, I don't know, there, there's just too many, too many variables there that, that somebody could use for fails to provide leadership. You know, did she, I don't even know. It's just, in my opinion, it's just very.
That could be very ambiguous, I mean, leadership could be, unless we have a definition of leadership.
Right.
You know, I, I would concur with you. All right.
Or leave it in and just say it has to be based on fact and supported by substantial evidence.
Well, what fact?
Yep, but she refers to that earlier.
You stole money.
Well, that's already covered.
That's covered.
That's already.
Okay, so the suggestion is three, there's another item you would, can we visit that, please?
Sure. It's Section 3C11, insubordination. I do not disagree that insubordination is a just cause for termination. However, I would like to question, who would I be insubordinate to? A commissioner or the board of commissioners? I would like to hear what you commissioners believe as the meaning of who I would be insubordinate to, because there's five of you. If one tells her one thing and the other, and another one tells her something different.
It would have to be a board unanimous decision, that's all.
Unanimous or majority?
Well, yeah.
Majority.
Three out of the five.
And that's, that's covered in there. Yeah, I.
By C3, since violation of any.
Do you want that clarification under that?
Well, you would have to, if we're going to keep that item in there, it would have to be clarified that the, it would take a majority vote of the board to terminate for insubordination.
Just, just add that in there.
Yeah.
Oh.
So on the second.
I'm sorry, it should be nine, it's actually nine, we, we had changed things. It's actually number nine.
3C9?
3C9, yeah.
Okay, and then that would add a majority of the board of commissioners.
Majority.
Okay, so that would be one change.
Okay.
The other change, you can amend your, your motions to reflect these changes. So the other, back to 3, 3C6, is there any questions on that? That, the second one was easy, okay?
Yep.
But so my, three, is there any hang up on 3C6?
No, we'll strike it out, I'll.
All right, so.
I'll amend my motion once we get through all four of these, or three of these.
Okay.
Okay, the next one?
And the, the third one is, the increases will be based on merit evaluation, that's Section 4A. The merit-based evaluation has not been part of the evaluation for the administrator, therefore she's cautious on agreeing to a merit-based evaluation that doesn't exist. But she's looking also for what, what the scale would be, you know, what the, and my suggestion was 0, 1, 3, and 5% up the scale.
Plus cost of living?
Plus the cost of living, yes.
And all other non-union benefits?
Yes.
Can, can you enlighten me, Mr. Chair, on previous commissioners' percentage raise? Was it a percentage or just a?
We never did merit-based stuff in the past.
Well, how did they get a raise?
They got, in the previous contract, it was, you know, a set amount the first year, 5,000 more the next year, and 5,000 more the third year. So it, it went up in.
No matter what?
No matter what. Mm-hmm.
And so this is new ground in terms of the board? So.
And what's, what's the administrator think of 5, 4, 5, 3, 1, and 0? Can you live with that?
She probably didn't want to comment on it. It's all right, you don't have to apologize, it's just.
But it's just, I'm stopping for it to go back and forth, so I will not.
So what is your pleasure board on the next item here? This, I like Nancy's suggestion.
Can, can I make one more suggestion?
Yes, please, as much as you like.
Can, can we make that top one, exceeds expectations? Can we change that to 6%? Because that would bring it up to, you know, over the 5,000. It's going to be under 5,000 if it's at 5%. And, and she has to exceed expectations, where in the past, the administrator only had to continue the contract to get to 5,000.
Gentlemen?
I, I can live with that.
Mr. Peterson, Mr. View? Sir?
Well, it's still subjective.
Everything's subjective.
Well, it's not objective to the point where if you have criteria that meets expectations, see, and that's what we were working on, me, me.
And you can still work on that, this is just.
We'll continue to.
This tells her what it's going to be.
If you did this much, if this happened, everybody knew this, then, then it was above and beyond.
Mr. Barron, can you live with Nancy's suggestion?
I think it's a good suggestion, I think.
All right. So would you, could you let your amended motion reflect that, sir?
Well, I will amend my motion to take Section 3C6 out.
Strikes 3C6.
Insubordination, Section 3, is that a?
C9.
Nine. A majority vote of the commission as.
Okay.
And.
So we would add the words a majority vote of the commission would be needed for 3C9?
And Section 4A, the expectation scale of.
If she exceeds?
6% meets 3%, doesn't meet expectations 1%, and 0 if unsatisfactory. I can live with that.
Very good, can I have the person who made the second amend their second to reflect that?
I'll amend that.
Okay, so it has been amended and moved by Commissioner View and amended and supported by Commissioner Melner. Is there any additional points in this contract that we need to go over before we vote on it, sending it to her?
The only other thing is, there might be a wording change or so, which I don't, because we need Exhibit A and Exhibit B added to it, and I don't think you ordered that properly in there for us to do that. And then the evaluation after nine months, it would be whatever was prior, that it's how many, is it two months before the end of every year that you do the notification on the evaluation or not?
There was no times, there was no timestamp on it in the past, we, you know, like.
Is it a yearly?
I think we used to draw a month.
We, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean.
Just so that nine months, that nine-month part is struck, and we just do it within that year, you know, first, we get the baseline within 30 days of signing, and then the first evaluation one year later. It was supposed to be nine months, because originally we talked about a one-year contract.
Yes.
And in order to go to second, third year, we wanted two evaluations. Now it's a three-year contract, we just want to do the baseline and get the next one at the, at the year mark, or before the year mark.
Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Barron, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Let me see if I can find that.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I found it.
One, one thing that Commissioner View has said that I kind of like, really, I still think that the raises should come at the second and third year, but I don't think it'd be a bad idea if, like you said, to keep on top of things, if maybe quarterly or biannually, we.
Well, that's Michigan Works, and, and I think we're going to work on that.
Yeah, gave her, gave her an evaluation, but it's, those evaluations wouldn't be connected to the raise.
No, no. Just to make sure we're all on track. If something's getting off track, that's, you had to listen to her to, to really understand what she was saying, and she's going to write it out for me, because I don't, I told her I wasn't going to remember our half-hour conversation, so.
Okay, as long, yeah, as long as her raises are, are on the year.
Yes, yes.
Then, then we could, like I said, it, it just helps her keep, keep into where, where our heads are at.
Keeps everybody on track.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, an amended second, additional discussion.
So let me just clarify.
Yep.
Because of the nine-month, I found it in here.
Okay.
The board will execute an annual evaluation prior to the anniversary date, so that, prior to her.
Yeah, instead of the nine months, no, yes. Because that was for a one-year contract instead of the three, no, now we have a three, so it'll be every, every 12 months.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion, additional discussion before we do a roll call. This motion would be to send the contract to Ashley, so I'd receive her reply. Clerk, Prisrocky, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes.
All right, thank you to the work for the Personnel Committee, and thank you to Ashley. Next item, unfinished stipend for the building and zoning assistant administrator.
This was brought to the county by a special conference between.
This was brought to the county by a special conference between Delta County and the union. I had Commissioner Melner and Commissioner Peterson that were a part of the special conference with the union. And it was due to a job duty that was being performed by the Building and Zoning Assistant Administrator. And she was like, a one-time stipend of $500 for the job duty that she had been fulfilling since August of '22. And she is no longer fulfilling those duties.
Gentlemen?
I make a motion that we pay the stipend.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, we had, this was brought up last month, if I remember.
Correct. It was brought to the finance, the finance had passed it, but according to our finance policy, we had to bring it back as old business.
Yeah, I should know that. Thank you for reminding me. I, I have a, I'm not familiar why we're giving $500 more for someone doing something they weren't supposed to do or beyond their, I mean, how, how could, I mean, can someone explain to me how this worked to the extent that we're, we're paying this? And is this going to set a past practice where this can happen with every employee?
I think we already set the precedent when we gave the airport manager stipend.
Well, we, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why I should support something that could come to our board every, every month on getting more money because, and I'm a union guy to the extent that, you know, things in rating you have to follow. But was this a minor thing or is this a major thing or, I mean?
The job duty?
What was, what happened where we owe money because she's doing something that she wasn't supposed to do, I guess, is what I'm understanding, right? You were on that. Can you explain or is somebody?
I can, if you, if Ashley would like me to.
Go ahead.
So there's reports that need to be filed by the mechanical and the electrical inspectors.
Plumbing.
And plumbing.
Mechanical and plumbing.
Mechanical and plumbing. And we have a part-time inspector right now, and he does, has not been filing the reports. So Karen has been doing it, Ms. Karen has been doing it. And it's above and beyond, it's out of her scope of her regular job. So over the, since May, was it?
Um, August.
It was nine months.
Yeah.
I think it was nine months.
Yeah. So there, she's asking for a stipend to reimburse her for the extra time that she had spent above and beyond her normal duties.
And I think she did, what, 292?
Correct. That comes in to piece.
It comes out hardly anything.
Did, did it increase her workday?
No.
Is, is that customary, the, if somebody does, you know, if I, I mean, I don't know, it just doesn't sit right.
I understand what you're saying, but, Ashley, go ahead.
I agree. I, it did not increase her workday. So, and this is what, the meeting, this is what we agreed upon as a resolution. She had been requesting a reclassification of a whole grade level due to this. Which was something that I could not support because it's a temporary position. The reason why we're here is we have a part-time inspector. We typically have a full-time inspector. The part-time inspector only works one day a week, and he fulfills all the inspections. So we would rather have him out in the field than filing, or filing his inspections within our database.
So.
So for going forward, our director of building, or administrator of building and zoning in the administrative office will be entering those inspections until we have a full-time position.
Okay. Anybody else with questions, please?
So it was just something that was overlooked in a, that she was doing.
When, you know, we visited apartment.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of.
I think we've established that now, and I think, you know, the box has been open.
Please, let's close it.
Commissioner Barron?
Done probably three of them already.
Wow.
Mr. Peterson, I think?
Well, I guess, like you said, like Ben said, we've opened Pandora's box on this one. I, I think that we need to create a policy on this so that we can, so that we can stop or do whatever we need to do with this. But I think at this point, with this one, it's, it's a minor amount, and I think we should go ahead with it. But then have Personnel Committee come up with a policy that we can, we can vote on to, to take care of this better.
Are you guys up for the task?
I, I have two sentences that I could, that I wrote down when I seen this that needs to be put in the contract that I, I think will stop this.
Okay.
So.
So we do, do we have a motion on the floor?
You, you what?
It's in the contract.
That what?
Um, that the job descriptions are made by Delta County Administration.
So you, you make the job descriptions. But do you have a clause in there that any, that and any other duties that are pertinent to the office?
No, that's, yeah.
If it doesn't extend the time of your day, you, you know what I'm saying?
Right, no, that is not included in their job descriptions.
Well, we can meet on that and discuss.
Okay. We have, Mr. Peterson, did you move on this? Did you make a motion on that?
I did.
So we have a second, though?
Yes, Commissioner Barron, second.
Commissioner Barron, second, additional information, or additional discussion on this?
Just, just what I have, what you were talking about there, this, this seems to be an in-house on each department. Probably the department head needs to be a little more vigilant, vigilant on this.
Yes. I, I, I'm going to support it probably just because I think within the next month or so we'll have it resolved as this can't come to our board anymore on, on this specific issue.
Very good. Then we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That has been approved. We have item number three under old business, the airport manager's salary package.
Actually, I am going to be requesting that the commissioners table this due to recent events that have occurred. And I would like to bring this back to the finance committee for evaluation a little bit more.
Okay, then we need a motion to table?
I would like to make that motion.
Supported by Commissioner Barron, uh, Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business, the payment of our bills.
I have examined all the claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is $867,721.96. Commissioner expenses of $404.87.
A motion to pay would be in order?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron that we pay our bills. Support, supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion. Roll call, clerk?
I, I have one question.
Hold on, Mr. View?
Could you, does anyone know what the soldier and sailor relief fund? Is that part of the veteran service organization where we pay for people that need help and stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay, do, do we have a total that we spent on that at all? I mean, I don't need it.
I mean, I don't know right off the top of my head.
No, no, I, I didn't expect you, but this, this is just for this.
Budgeted, this year's budget there is $4,000.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure you knew what that line item was in there, so. Okay, thank you.
All right, Nancy, please.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. That would pass. Item number two is the resignation of M. Dreys and to fill the corrections officer position. Could we please get a letter to that person and thanking them for their service to the county? Commission?
I move to accept the resignation.
So, okay, we have, Commissioner Melner has made the motion to accept, and Commissioner Barron would be a second on that motion. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Request to fill the part-time client service support clerk position.
What is, where, where is that position in our county? What is that?
I think it's, is it Nancy's, your office?
District Court.
District Court, okay.
With Judge, or is it just all of them?
Parks.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a request from Judge Parks.
What we had was some, that position, we just, this is our newly created position.
Yes, that's right.
She actually applied for our full-time position within District Court. So she's over there, and now we have to fill this part-time position again.
I'll move that we request to fill that position.
Moved by Commissioner View, support, supported by Commissioner Melner that we fill the part-time client service support clerk position. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Airport consulting services is item number four.
So the airport board has made a recommendation to hire Mead and Hunt as the airport professional consulting service. And we would need approval from the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation.
So it's been approved by the board, gentlemen?
Yes. I'll, I'll move that we.
You guys would like to speak on it or anything?
Well, let's get the motion first.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, except the.
I'll support it.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner View that we hire Mead and Hunt for the consulting position. Additional discussion?
I'd just like to say that I was in the, the presentation that they put out, and they were kind of like the Walmart of, of consulting firms. They had every single area covered that they have people in their, in their company to help us with, whether it be engineering, whether it be licensing.
Environmental.
Environmental, everything right there in their, right there in that office. And they were very supportive in the fact that, you know, basically we could call them at any time for just about anything, and they would help us out.
I believe they even had like an arborist?
Yeah.
In their office, so.
Yeah, and my, my comment is I, I was in the same meetings as Commissioner Peterson, and I listened to both presentations, both very thorough, very good. And one comment that I, I think they both would do justice. But, but the thing that caught my eye is Green Bay was a little closer than Downstate. The, the amount of consultants they have was huge, up in the 1,200s. They use a lot of local people. But the one comment that, that really caught me on being supportive of Mead and Hunt was Commissioner Peterson's comment. You get complacent after a while with somebody that we had for years and years and years. And a new set of eyes and a new set of ears took me to support somebody different that had the same qualifications as the other ones. So I thought it was pretty nice to get that, you know, like if you have the same accounting firm all the time for audits, you get friendly with them, and all of a sudden certain things can happen and not pass properly. Well, I thought the same way with this. So that's why I, I voted for Mead and Hunt.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. And now under the addendums added to the agenda, item number five would be the registration of Jay Healy, request for a lump sum payout, the district court administrator's magistrate position.
I would like to accept that resignation.
I know, keep going. Okay, so.
I'll move that we accept the resignation of Gene Healy.
All right, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner View, a second?
I'll support it.
All right, very good. Additional discussion, gentlemen?
Can you tell us, is she retiring or what's going on? Do we have any background on this? Why, because she was good?
No comment.
No comment? Okay. I just wanted to know.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you want to send a letter?
Absolutely, we'd very much like to send her a letter thanking her. Credit card request for district court judge by Judge Parks.
Correct. With Gene Healy no longer with us, she was our credit card holder. So we would like a credit card for Steve Parks, and Gene's credit card will be disabled.
Well, I would need a board motion.
With, with that, I'll move that we transfer that credit card.
We can't transfer. One would have to be killed.
Well, I meant, the authority of the credit goes to Judge Parks, you said? Would it stay with him the whole time then?
And then when we fulfill the position, we'll come back here and we'll switch it again.
That was going to be my question. I'll move that we do that temporarily.
All right, then we offer. Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner, that we offer Judge Parks this credit card. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item would pass. The approval of the administrator's administration requests opinions of legal counsel. She already can do that. She, I was just asking for formality for your blessing. We always, we don't necessarily always have the opportunity to go through our policy if things jump up. And we need to have the administrator know that she can call counsel and spend up to $2,500. I'm not saying it's going to be happening all the time. It hasn't happened once yet that I know of this, since this board has been convened. So we're not receiving exorbitant bills, we're not getting any bills from counsel. But I just wanted to run this by you guys and see if, I, I think it's very, very appropriate.
I, my opinion, a little different than yours. I, I believe we need to be able to talk to counsel, but I think we need criteria, not just money-wise, but reasons why.
Well, yeah, but I don't think it's going to be nilly-willy.
I would like to have a syllabus that if this happens, this happens, this happens, you can do it without board approval. But then it has to come to the board, or somehow you have engagement with the board that you're doing it. Not just, I don't want to be blindsided anytime on anything.
Any issue that she would seek counsel for would have to go before the board post facto. What I don't want to do is have the county unrepresented and our backside in the breeze legally, so to speak. I don't want to offer an orgy of opinion-giving and, you know, zap the taxpayers. But in light of recent events, I think it would be very appropriate if we, she's going to be accountable for everything that happens. And so I don't think it's going to be a nilly-willy thing or something that would be, throw caution to the wind. I think it's only when needed, and she hasn't been beating down my door.
That's subjective, too.
Well, everything we do is subjective, isn't it?
No, not everything.
I mean, if you can come up with a rubric of, of, you know, I'd love to, seriously, I'm looking for any help in this situation.
How about if we, if we put that, that she, that she would have to contact the chairman of the board or, or something like that?
Well, she already can contact MMRMA.
Yeah.
Then she's got the prosecutor.
Yep.
She can contact, so I don't know what other legal.
Well, if I, if I may, MMRMA.
Is an insurance company?
Is an insurance company, and, and they're not going to, they're not going to answer questions about. They're going to, they're going to work with us on a lawsuit, and that, that, if we get sued. And that's all they'll work with us on. We've talked to them about that. They are not going to give us legal counsel on, on procedures or, or.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Positive.
And not unless it involves them.
What's that?
Not unless it involves them.
Well, there, I'm sure, everything we do involves them. Because we're liable, anything liable that we do would have to go through them.
Most recently, when we had another issue visited, you had what I consider to be two legal titans sitting there. You had Fahey and Foster and Swift. The county had no representation. And that's my point. I didn't want to bring that up, but I don't think, really have any choice. We have a fiduciary obligation to make sure that we cover the people of the county with adequate legal representation. It doesn't mean that she's going to use it. And I sense your irritation. You can move if you'd like, but, I mean, it gives her an option to use additional.
I'd rather give you the option.
I don't want the option. I want the administrator to do it.
Well, you're the head of our board, you're our leader. I, I would really prefer either that or you have a criteria that you use so that we know that when she's contacting someone, these things have happened and we need them now. Can't wait for a board meeting.
Commissioner View?
All right.
If you would say that Commissioner Moyle could, could have the authorization, why couldn't have it? So our administrator contacts our chairman and gets the permission to do it.
I want the same, same criteria, though. There's only certain ways and certain procedures you should follow to utilize that. And it should be, you know, like an emergency or something? You can't come for the board for full, full review, and our legal department can't help us? MM, whatever that is.
MMRMA, insurance company.
They, they do a lot of advice to other boards I'm on, on policies and procedures. They, they do a lot of advice to other boards I'm on, on policies and procedures they follow, saying that this could hurt you, this, you know...
The one thing the city does really well, I spent five and a half years on that council, is they have an actual attorney. At that point in time, it was Ralph B.K. Peterson. He would sit there. A lot of times, he didn't do anything. Sometimes, he did a lot. But my point is, is that when we needed him, it's, it's like a defibrillator. I mean, if you need that tool and it's not there, you, you could be in big trouble. I, I, we've received no bills from attorneys, and I, I don't wanna, like I said, create a nilly-willy situation, but I want the administrator to have the ability, if she thinks it's necessary. I assume that, you know, we can craft a policy saying that, you know...
Then I'll support it if we do that, if it's, if it's a good policy. I would, I would support something like that.
It would be something in the, what I'm...
I mean, she can write it up herself. She'll know, you know, with the Personnel Committee, we can come up with some good criteria that, because you'll know what you'll need one for. I, I just don't wanna just say, okay, you can do it anytime you want, whenever you want.
It's not a, well, she's got that right now, up to 10 grand. What she's doing right now is just asking for our approval, in case she feels that she needs assistance on an opinion reg, issue. If, clearly if it's through MMRMA, she's gonna save the money for us.
But their own legal department is pretty good, too.
Well, and we've used them.
Do we have, I mean, we have a county prosecutor, but we don't have a legal...
No, we have a civil, yeah, we, there is, there is people, John, what, what was that other, her assistant? She was more than just a prosecutor.
I can't think of her name.
Beth Wickwire.
Yeah. She has a lot more experience in civil stuff.
She's our chief, chief assistant, chief prosecutor.
I just didn't, you know, I mean, we were...
I don't know, is it a...
The prosecutor's office.
She's just not a prosecutor. She has a law degree in other issues that could really help our board out. Contract language, labor disputes, stuff like that. I, I think she told us different things like that. So we, we have a pretty diverse legal team that we can draw from.
Do we have, do we have a motion on the floor right now?
No.
No, there's no motion. I would like to...
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we table this to the next meeting, so that we can take and, and look into all of this, all of the sources. We can look into the prosecuting attorney, her assistant, MMRMA, and in the attorney that we had hired already.
This wouldn't be necessarily Scott Graham, this could be anybody.
Right. So let's, let's, if, if, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until next meeting.
I'll support it.
All right, well, fair enough. We have a motion to table and support from Mr. View, a motion from Mr. Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor of tabling till the next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that will be tabled till the next meeting. Now, I believe we're out of items for business, so now we would...
Public comment.
Yeah, now it's general public comment. Ma'am, Ms. Weber, you're more than welcome. You have three minutes, and, and thank you for coming up.
I'd have some comments. I have known Mr. Peterson for over 12 years. He was the president of an organization that I was in. I was on the board several times. He has never done anything except try to help and be cooperative. We went on, organized with many people on trips to do things, and I wanna say that he never once lied to me. Okay? Now, Mr. View, I'm going to address you. I believed when I was told the last board that you were on. You told me that they lied about you, they said that you stole money, that you did things underhanded, and they were out to get you. And I believed you, so I took it upon myself, which I regret, to help you get where you are right now and get elected. And I find out just recently, which destroyed trust in me, that you out and out lied, and you and another committee member is on a secret organization to come against and get rid of a couple of our other commissioners. When I helped you to get elected, I wanna say that I thought, getting you here and you doing your job, instead of trying to pound everybody else, or try to make trouble for everybody else, and I've got a lot of people coming to me, saying that not only do you drag things out, you make trouble after trouble for everyone, and that you attack everyone. And I'm just asking you, Mr. View, who's gonna be the next one if these two are gone? Mr. Mellner, you too. If they're gone, who are you going to stand and attack next? Why can't you just do your job so good that they also will go along with you? It's not necessary to deliberately go out, and you said that you were for them staying on the board, and find out you're on this committee to get rid of them. I feel betrayed, and so does a lot of other people that have come to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Anybody else? General public comment. State your name and go ahead.
Deb Abramson, Wells Township. Two weeks ago, we, the citizens of Delta County, were subjected to a lengthy diatribe. It consisted of partisan political talking points, social media conspiracy theories, personally held religious beliefs, and perceived slights. You commissioners were hired by all of the taxpayers to see to the business of this county. One responsibility is to provide county support to the helping organizations that provide vital aid for all of our citizens. You failed them, all because of two words: diversity training. Three of you readily admitted that you did not know what this training entailed for the Upcap staff. Yet, three of you refused to support a resolution for continued county support for Upcap. One person cited, again, past personal perceived slights, political partisan talking points, multiple conspiracy theories, and personally held religious beliefs. Another based his decision on the fact that he is not a liberal and does not support individual groups, and not, does not support them getting special considerations. Apparently, the only citizens that deserve the respect and services of Upcap in this county are white males. Using his line of thinking, elderly women, people of color, and LGBTQ receiving the same services would be giving them special considerations. Sadly, the commissioner from my district, which is Wells, stated he had no idea what this, this diversity training for Upcap would entail. The reason he said it was that he did not know was that he had only spent five minutes at the last Upcap board meeting. Yet, he voted to not support Upcap. Had he stayed for the entire meeting, he might have gotten the answers to this question. Had he stayed for the entire meeting, he may have been able to bring the resolution to the board, leaving them adequate time to research this concern. The head of this board has repeatedly stated here and in the media that this vote was really not all that important for our county, as it did not include anything financial. This could not be any farther from the truth. At the last meeting, a concerned citizen made a very good observation. What goes on at these meetings could potentially influence, influence our county's ability to keep and attract business and industrial entities. What will potential business or industry see looking at our county's ability to conduct business in a thoughtful, fair, and their willingness to support all of the citizens of this county? They will see decisions made according to perceived slights. They will see commissioners making...
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Okay, we have a general public comment, if you would. State your name and general public comment. Third and final time call for general public, oh, very good. Welcome.
At most every meeting in this last year, I've noticed a tendency for people to use their general public comment time to pursue their personal agendas. That is the right of the people, and I have no issue with that. However, we have now added to the agenda general public comment regarding agenda items, aiming the system by using the two three-minute opportunities to carry on further their attacks. So when people are part of this, they get a six-minute attack, rather than simply being able to state their feelings. Commissioners, I would recommend that you eliminate one of the two. Perhaps in the middle of the meeting, where we currently have general public comment on agenda items, include general public comment. That allows everyone to have one opportunity at the dais for a general public comment, and we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. General public comment. Sir, state your name and welcome.
Don Roy from Wells Township. First of all, thanks, Bob, for the presentation that you did. Everybody in this room actually needs to hear that, because nobody, including the board, except for Bob, knows the history of how this country was started, and that's by design, so that things can go on in this country the way it is going on. Commissioner View, you said something about wanting more information, that you were gonna talk with Bob. Here's a book you might be interested in. It's called Government for the Christian. Okay? It covers just about everything that Bob was saying, saying in a little bit more detail. Everybody in this room ought to, actually ought to get this book and read it, because most of us in this room are clueless as to how this nation started. Okay? The other one's this, The Constitution Made Easy. This one is out of print, but there is a book out there called The Constitution Alive by Richard Green, Rick Green. It has been reproduced in there. It makes the Constitution easy to read. This nation is where we are because people have turned away from God, just as Bob was trying to put a cross. God is involved in everything, whether you like it or not. But we need to get back to that, and this would help. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
General public comment, please. Anybody with desire? Welcome.
Shirley Golak, City of Escanaba. I am not a public speaker. I don't like talking in front of people, but the last comments and Commissioner Barron's sermon at the start of the meeting prompted me to say a few words. I took civics classes when I was in school, and one of the things that we were taught was that this country was founded on the premise of freedom of religion. I don't recall any place where we were told that it was all about Christianity. Perhaps I was mistaught. And Commissioner Barron also mentioned the Declaration of Independence and the fact that it has the verbiage in it that says all men are created equal. That was, if any of you happened to read my letter to the editor, one of the things that I mentioned as what I think is a premise for the whole diversity issue that was so controversial at the last meeting. We're all equal. We should all be entitled to the same treatment and have access to the same services. I think Mr. Barron also mentioned a speech that he made at Bay College many years ago. I was in the faculty, sitting in the audience when he gave that speech. What he failed to mention was that during that speech, in which he had his Bible in his hand, he was calling out educators. There was a controversy at the time about the failure to teach creationism, and he basically accused the educators of indoctrinating students. And when that happened, many of the faculty members stood up and turned their back on him. Much like tonight, as he was talking, you may have noticed that people from the audience got up and left. We didn't come here to be preached to. And since you also like to bring up many quotes, I have one for you as well. The qualities of morality, charity, empathy, honesty, kindness, whatever terms you wish to use, are not exclusive to Christians, or to those who believe in God. They are qualities of being a decent human being. I think that you need to realize that starting the meeting with a prayer does not necessarily mean you're doing God's work. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please.
Chris Williams, Ford River Township. The gentleman who stood up and spoke about public comment failed to say what his name was and where he is, so he was Reed Haiken, Escanaba. I wanna comment about what he had to say. The general public comment on agenda items has been on this agenda for as long as I can remember. It wasn't just added on, and it's incredibly important. General public comment on agenda items is the only way that the public has the ability to provide you with input prior to your making a decision. It is the most important spot on the agenda for the public. General public comment on the end of the agenda is, is very important to me, but not as important as on the agenda items. I fail to see why removing that is, is a logical step, although you have that authority. You do only have to have public comment one time. That is your requirement. You must allow the public to address you. But if you were to do that, I would be incredibly disappointed, and I think many, many of your constituents would be as well.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment. Last call, general public comment. That would be closed. Commissioners' concerns? Commissioner Peterson?
Last Wednesday, I went to munising for a meeting with, and the people that were there was Rural Development, and NISTDA, and a few others, Department of Agriculture, and a lot of their talk was for money grants and small, low-interest loans to go out to people starting some kind of housing. Not necessarily to individuals, but to developers, contractors, that's going to put in place housing. Some of that money was earmarked for low income. Some of that money was earmarked for working-class housing, which would be your mid-income to upper-middle income. I have cards for the people to get in touch with, and I have talked to a couple of investors and contractors, and I would like to invite any other contractors, investors, developers, to please come talk to me, and I will get that information to you. That, as everybody knows, or at least I've said several times, that that is my goal on the board, is to enhance housing and also economic development in this county. So that's, that's where I've been at in the last week, working on, on my goals. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Steve?
Thanks for your support. I'm sorry I lost your trust, but trust goes both ways, and it's built on communication. I heard about this issue of me supporting a recall of the three commissioners. I have never publicly said anything about supporting that. I've been neutral in my position the whole time. I first heard about... I first heard about the internet thing last week, even at a meeting Commissioner, me and Melner were at. Our names were listed on there. Someone took my name. I do not have an internet presence. You can check it out. You want to come to my shop? You want to prove to me that's me? And I will admit to something that I can't believe happened because it's impossible for me to support something that I don't support. And if my name's on there, it's gossip. Internet is horrible sometimes. It can cause a lot of friendships to be lost, a lot of trust to be lost. I'm hoping that you can prove to me. I'm not asking you to talk to anyone else, but please come by and show me what you have, that you believe so much that I was, I'm part of this committee to get rid of them, a secret group? I have no idea what's going on. I'll, I'll put my hand on a Bible like Mr. Barron's always talking about the hire somebody. I believe he's on my side under this. So please, help me out. Let's build our trust up again. Other than that, on a lighter note, on Delta Solid Waste Management Authority Board that I'm on, they need a landfill compactor. It's going to be very expensive. They're looking at one from Roland. Says it compacts 10% more, gets eight mile, eight gallons per hour. The old one, the Bullmag, has been broken down since the day they bought it for five years. And it gets 13 to 14 gallons an hour. So I, I think our authority is probably going to make a decision very quickly. They're trying to out, to buy a new one, and it, it's, it's pretty expensive. I, I think up in the 800,000 range. Don't, don't quote me, but it's, it's quite an expense. Therefore, there's an increase of tonnage going up 375 a ton, starting January of 2024. That'll affect everybody, all the haulers, stuff like that. It'll be $70 a ton. So I just thought I would prepare everybody a couple of months ahead of time that maybe they'll pass the cost on. I can't see them not, but they will. We also gave a bid out for propane at UP Propane out on the highway there. $1.38 a gallon. Let us know if that's a good price, because I know a lot of yous probably burn with propane, but that seemed like the lowest bid for us. I was, I was also proud to be part of the county presence at the LNM Fleet Supply. I met the owner, looked around the store, thanked him for choosing Escanaba Delta County to open up a business of that magnitude for us. And I think competition is always good. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Melner?
All I can say is social media, social media. I did go to the Northern Lights Music Fest. It was excellent. Big round of applause for them that put it on. Second or third, I keep updated from Line 5, Embridge. They keep sending me stuff. And they are still working very hard at getting that tunnel built. They threw a number out, which was amazing. Line 5 uses enough gas for 1 million cars, which is amazing. And most of that stays in Michigan. So I am very supportive of Line 5. Another good thing about Line 5, and I talked to a big electric company down in lower Michigan, that if Line 5 does go through and they build the tunnel, they will run a power line through that tunnel. They said they can't do it, just, it's too expensive doing it, going underground. So with the tunnel being there, they are more than anxious to get more power up to the UP, which would be great, because then it would make a whole loop, which would give us a lot more power. That's all I got.
Thank you, John. Mr. Barron?
Thank you. I have another quote here. This quote is, "The future success of America is not in the Constitution, but in the laws of God upon which this Constitution is founded." President James Madison, former, he was also, I believe, US Supreme Court Chief, one of the writers of the Federalist Papers.
Nancy? Ashley?
I do. I'd like to thank Wells Township, especially Supervisor Boz Desowicz, for providing Wells Park, the park behind the Learning Center for the Special Olympics this year. He received a phone call from Area 1's coordinator, Becky Carey, who puts together this event. And he right away called up, I am one of the A1 or Stenbergs, to provide a bathroom facility for the Special Olympics within two days. It was very impressive. So tonight, the event was softball for the Special Olympics, and on Thursday will be bocce ball. So if anybody would like to go down and support the Special Olympics participants.
Kudos to the Chamber for the music festival. I thought it was outstanding. It was good for the area. And I think it will grow into something outstanding, even beyond what it's been doing. Getting ready for the fair, so hopefully we'll see you there. That's all I have. We have our schedule. The regular Board of Commissioners meeting of five, excuse me, 8:15, 23 at 5:15 PM. It's right here at the Service Center. Then we have a regular meeting at the beginning of September on 9/5/23. It's the Commissioners' informational workshop, starting at 5:00 PM. And additional to that, we have a meeting on 9/19/23, right here at the Service Center at 5:15 PM. There are no 30-day appointments, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.